Any votes in favor? Any of your votes? Moving on to special presentations, E A S robotics.
So they are here in the building. Where Mr. Scott down there.
Let's pull them up.
Yeah.
All right. Moving on to public comment. Everyone's racing their lights. I'm moving on to the administrator, the S A U administrator reports. Are there anything to add to your report?
Nothing to add, just really excited about.
How does that come about? I was just curious, like how did those 20 kids here? Back fly or?
So immediately when I got the notification, I signed up for my.
Any guests?
Uh, no, so any student who has done leadership training with me in the past. And then I think I said that to all part of us as well.
Right.
Yeah. That's why I've been active also. So first, the organization around for three years now, this is.
Any questions for Mark or for? All right. Any questions for us for work though? Questions we want to relate to at this point. Uh, I would like to know, well. Maybe Adam.
Well, I don't know a lot about the well. I, I know that the water's working where it seems to be. No pun intended. And we haven't had the Kansas School because of water, which is a huge loss. But they put it online, but I don't know a lot about the well.
But the well, the well's not in the swamp, right? Or because he says that we're waiting for census.
I think we're waiting for in tank census, yeah. So we didn't cut over, we were supposed to cut over on the long list. And that was caught because of census, so. I haven't heard enough basis. So when I say I don't know a lot about the well, I really do mean I don't know a lot about the well.
All right. Any questions for?
I guess the one question I would ask is because we've been waiting since the spring to do this four-time with testing. And I know we're waiting to do them all at once. But is there a possibility if we could do the other two schools in the meantime and then do the middle school? I think it would definitely make parents happy to see if those numbers.
I will check in and wait. Um, there's likely even costs associated with that.
Moving on to director of student services. To add.
Yeah. I think you asked a little bit about things like that. But I just wanted to go a little more into the software initially than.
I'd also like to, in general, and it's probably an unusual question, but I was waiting, I was thinking about it. Cause you hear other school districts that have really struggled with increased costs. And you had written there over time, it's decreasing, you know, all sorts of grants. All of the decrease money has decreased the amount of variable for anticipated special expenses. But do you think, and it's hard to anticipate what that could ever be, but do you think we'd be okay? And we have like a big influence? I mean, how? How do you manage that? The grant, you know?
Yeah, so I don't know if you can answer that, but.
I mean, it's not really answerable, but I, it made me think about it like.
Student, again.
Right, yeah. If a student moved in, how do you, how do you pay for that?
Well, yeah, other students.
Okay, yeah, that's.
It's not. It's not. It's more than a computer that's saying. Yeah. Yeah, the front point you mentioned, Mr. Guard, is to say that there's some staffing that happens in that area. And as those costs increase, that's where the.
Right. Yeah, I appreciate you thinking about that.
Yeah, that, that could be a good way to sort of, or serve a new set of persons. So a big movement and a lot of replacements, but they have a great inspiration. As the money's very high for starting and things like that. The amount of money that actually been left in there to do things like I'm anticipating would be like, like this year it's coming $3,000 in unexpected compact service. Yes, or something like that comes up for a kid or a moving opportunity that is not budgeted for. And use those very unsupposed, so. That's more than used in the past and has to happen.
Right. That's what, yeah.
I have a question. You said that for the indicator 13 one. You said that there's going to be four files that are monitored. Are those before that fall in that category? Or was it just a random? When say we had eight and we just randomly chose?
Yeah, so they can really choose files from, well, they give better 14 and more. So usually one out of the 13 is over there, but. They can go and choose.
And then the indicator number session, is that just something you take part in or is it some staff as well?
Yeah, so myself and Jorge is generally doing that, but those are first of all, usually the head of the site. And he was in there and kept. Those are all based off of the federal indicators, so it's a way for the state to respond to that. Especially for federal.
How much did we get?
Yeah, so our, our, we chose $315,000. And there, there are two-year grants, so like that was what we got allocated this year. And the spending data until September.
Any other questions? No. Moving on to Mark.
I don't have a ton to add about the, the C I A here. We're gonna be early December. I think once we get things squared away or. I didn't put this in the report. Once we get things squared away for the personal question, I'll maybe with the board members, P T O members. Look at that maybe as well. Um, in reference to the rankings information I shared, I think one other thing that I don't think I put in here is pretty important is the reading statistics come from 21, 22. So we're really hoping in half is 22, 23 this school. So that's kind of important to keep in mind. But other than that, unless there's questions, I think.
So just my question, when you had suggested we do some stuff for the project, you might want to be good stuff. That's the program to pull over that you have a right to essentially look at whatever live data we had at the time. So that would fluctuate instead of these scattered, is that what you were suggesting?
I mean, ideally, what I would love to see happen, and this is kind of a pirate trip. I would love branching lines and talking to each other and somehow cooperate the, the data dashboard. And I don't want to get into the weeds too much. To me, at a port card, you really think that it's a specific data dashboard person. So you can log into that any time. You can get meals on data, you can have a loan. We don't have test scores, we don't have seller library as well. And it just seems to be an effort that we must make. That's down there.
And this would be something that we could have a bit of hope for the community. We have teachers go on the website.
Yeah, you got a super high level public facing.
Yeah, we're close. And you, you know, we're gonna look into that.
Yeah. Yeah, we just felt, we installed a few things we need to work out with the branching lines and all, so they talk to each other.
What do you think of that all?
I'll leave the tech department's working on it right now. And he is doing some tech stuff about, that's about it. That works best, so that's what's happening.
Any more questions?
Just one other thing about the breathing in the elementary school. Um, are we having anything new to kind of help?
Yeah, that's been going on ever since art was put in. And it's gonna happen with any degree program or math program you play in, you find gaps within. And we have U fly, which is a phonics program in a better place. And there's, there's another one in a better place.
Hidering.
Hidering, that's, that's in place as well, which is again around the email org and things like that. So art is super strong in that, those fill in those gaps. And I, I feel really comfortable saying we're, we're seeing the difference. Scores have gone up over time, we see that in our report as well.
When did, when did we, we're rushing memory, when did we get those kind of onboard?
Uh, 18 months ago.
Okay.
We definitely started, started around 18 months ago.
All right. So we're still in the process of seeing the results of having those. Is there anything else that you think that would be beneficial to have? Or do you think we just need to wait and see how these play out?
I don't think you want to keep piling stuff on.
Yeah.
Cause it's really, really strong. I have not heard any of the teachers on the reward as we have, we need to have more, especially when doing sessions. I do feel really bummed. And you'll see that as time goes on, the scores are increasing, as yourselves. Depending on where the other schools land. And, and you definitely want to read in a sort of, uh, edits that has a much bigger. Score of schools that score lower than, uh, pro level that just go current. Like I'll use Boston Elementary as an example. My kids go to Boston Elementary, it was over 23%. I figured this much, they scored lower in all areas.
Thank you, Mark.
Sure. And I love Boston Elementary.
Any questions for Mark? Moving on to the students who were, or. Question? The, the, the break was awesome. Okay. I, I have heard from many elementary parents that why can't we have the, the preschool? Now that the preschool add, why can't we have?
We're not gonna talk about.
I'm curious how the lunches are going. Is it better now that we don't have that big a lunch or whatever we were calling it? It's working well?
Yeah. Well, they should have left their class offices out, that's the best idea because it's scary to see, but we forgot about that.
I'd like to say that I love the, um, the suggestion blocks and how you guys are timing it to get any information. You guys kind of going, it sounds like you guys are not just giving one small idea, but you guys are like really owning it and taking off it. So I'm really excited to see what you guys come up with because it already sounds really Mr. Pest's stuff that you guys have a lot of good ideas that we can apply. Thank you.
But with the volume, you want us to kind of, I mean, that always puts a down there. Oh, plenty of that.
Hey, what do you, let us guess.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's okay, through the building, just be distributed to everybody.
Um, and we'll move on to Lori.
Well, I do have a lot more to add. I just will say today was our assembly day and it was one of our. It's been a few years for some reason since we've had a veterans day assembly, but as many people said, it was actually one of our best. And part of it was one of our current professionals, Steve Chisholm, he's a retired Marine, and he spoke to the kids. And you already have such a great relationship with them that 500 kids were listening to every military that is engaged in quiet honor and respect the military. So, um, and families sent in pictures that they have connections to active military veterans. Um, and we'll send that out to people. It's quite nice, I think we got over our number of connections through that, so. Thanks. Also, just to add to what Owen said, we also added, um, morphine magic, um, which is, um, the third and fourth graders to better understand how the capital words come together. And that helps looking and coding and decoding, so that we're spelling it right. So only out of the, at the younger levels, U fly and Hidering, we also added the same for our older children. Cause that was the area that we were navigating on our, our test and that's the one thing that's on.
Any questions?
I have a comment. Um, I had a couple of parents reach out and say, I think you went for a few years without having parents part of the company, the art thing. Now they're part of the company.
And did that for you, yeah.
Yeah. Anyways, before saying it was really great, you know, it was fun, so just wanted to give you that feedback.
We also love the assembly, the assembly there is that we're talking to. We also really, really, wow, the need to look like this.
Moving on, can you do a little more on school math?
Well, I have to fill in one important gap that I wasn't able to report on. Um, the day I wrote this, I didn't know how the girls soccer championship game was gonna turn out. The girls did really well, they won, um, it was versus Hollis, the Hollis book line, kind of similar to the other championship game. Um, so they had a great season. Girls going to try to, very cool. Um, beyond that, I don't really have anything to add, but I just, it's a worthy shout out. It was really neat, Mike, to have the, the spotlight shine on Dr. L and Carrie Harris and all the structure literacy work that was going on. It was just really neat, cause there's a lot of people involved with that. When you ask questions kind of about like literacy and how we're approaching it. I think there's a lot of really good things going on throughout the district, but that's one area that is worthy of some focus. And I think the other thing that's on hold with the elementary school and the B M S is really helpful and important for us. But in that conversation, there's all the folks that went through the letter train that's been offered over the last few years. Because that helps you develop the systems. It's not just about the programs, it's about the systems and having that widespread capability across your, your E L A staff, doing the other things. I think that, that's been good as well. We've also worked on consistency, so we stay with art, like the elementary has. We've introduced morphine magic as well into our field. There's some, there's some really good, I think, systems level kind of thinking and alignment that is gonna help over time. I think it's gonna help system one, which is great. So very cool stuff.
Any questions for Adam? Moving on to the high school.
Yeah, just a couple of quick things to add. Uh, we're gonna go down and see robotics just a little bit, but three of our five robotics teams just this past weekend competed. One of our teams came in first place in the tournament. Um, they brought home excellence award and another special recognition. So as D J Cowley says, all we do is win, win. Our girls soccer team, she's a championship. Um, girls field hockey, um, made the championship, had a great run. And then we also, like the, like the elementary school, we also had a veterans day recognition last Friday. And we paid, we paid tribute to the veterans who work in this building. So Dr. Paul Cohen, Kate Kula, Chris Fosse, Chris Stevens, and Officer Serena Schuh. So it was great to see our students be appreciative to the veterans and our community.
I'd just like to say though, that being invited to the high school for the parade and everything, um, it was a very, very fun, like positive environment. Not a surprise, but it was, it was very great to see all the, all the students come together and it was fun, so thank you very much.
Moving on to the I P.
I don't have a whole lot to add to that report, but, um, I, I do want to recognize some of the folks on my team. I feel like we have a, I'm just really grateful for having such a competent team. Um, makes my job somewhat easier to know that I can rely on them to do, you know, the heavy lifting. Um, just want to recognize, recognize Gino and Connor, her, like this past month, they've done a ton, a ton of projects, like standing up that sound system of a premier field. Connor was along with the, you know, pulling the wire and doing all these things in short notice. Um, sort of in the name of competing, uh, staying within a reasonable budget, which if we had fired that out, then. I thought, and to say the least, some of those numbers would have been a little bit. So hats off to them. Uh, Connor continues to do work with the security cameras. He's really good in that space. And then on top of that, just maintaining the day-to-day operations, tickets, running around, putting out fires, stuff like that. So they're doing an excellent job. Martin Mett, the middle school, he's done an excellent job. He's got a good work ethic and he's uniquely suited to that, uh, fast-paced environment over there and he's well respected. So I appreciate his efforts. Um, Eli over his new, new to the district, he's over at the elementary school. Um, I think he is also well suited for that position. He has a very, uh, easy disposition, easy manner where he's comfortable through like a lot of the hand holding and blocking people through that. And that's not like a, that sounds like a, but it's not, I mean, it. But I think with, with, I think with kids that age, you kind of have to, you get where I'm going here. Anyway, let's just quickly move on. Um, Elliot, I can't say enough good things about him. He's revamped law, uh, he takes on new projects. He's working on the ranging mines integration, apparently one of the first districts to take that on. Uh, just doing a great job, um, so I'm happy with him. Chris is, he's kind of the dark horse behind the scene. He, he does all of our internal structure upgrades. Really great guy, um, respects his abilities and he's easy to get along with. So overall, just really proud of the team and all the new strengths that we're into the table.
I got a question about the district regaling analysis.
Yes.
Sure. And have any guess what's in this?
Yeah, so like the, the total initial cost would be about $200,000. And then E rate would break down to 100,000. And that would enable us to get into a refund system that would, uh, reduce our, um, annual phone cost by approximately one or two. So like attempt for the cost that we have now. So you can see that by that over a period of about three years, we got into that phone system and also we would be. Was that?
How much should we favor votes right now? We can save 90%.
Yeah, so it's, uh, what, what we have now is, uh, um, uh, per phone model. So we pay on a flat fee per phone. I did the setup, we, uh, we took it from 100,000 dollars down to 10,000. Um, so we went from a per extension model to a paid per minute model. So it's 10 of a penny per minute. Um, and we got more flexibility to cloud-based phone system. You can connect your extensions, uh, without needing to hand it on, you know, and then load it up here. So if you have people that had to be out wired and they're built by extension next round to the school. It would allow us to potentially enter the environment into our systems. So they could extension to extension calls over to the S A U, maybe over to, um, the other school to check in on some of the people here. There's a lot of, uh, big other things.
I don't know if we've been buying, have we been buying new phones? Or haven't there been new phones in the budget to be that, like, that we gotta go slowly trying to like? That we kind of do it more?
Yeah, we kind of, from, from what I can see, we kind of like this hybrid model of old and new and.
Yeah.
It's kind of, it's kind of mixed together and I can foresee us going down into the closet downstairs and just working out that P B S. And not having all that, that hardware onsite and just rely on the equipment that's out in the class. Um, and phone calls just are over the internet essentially. And I think this is not that we've bought in the last two years for actual physical phones, so it's, it's nothing, it's phone service.
Right, right, yeah, yeah.
But you need one way or the other, or you pay.
Yeah. So we needed, we needed certain things that. Right, so I'm saying as we replace phones, you know, we do a little less of that, because they were.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of opportunities for savings and also, um, replacing cable in some cases is 12, 12 people as well.
Do you have a rough idea of how much we'd favor it for you for that?
For, for what?
For the phone, or if we cut it down to 10%, what is that?
I, I can give you those numbers, uh, I'm prepared.
Yeah, I know the. That'd be great.
Good.
I want to say thank you for giving me the team, like you mentioned that one of these games, they're having some wifi issues. Mr. Shaq, the president of the ball base. At one point, your board, you weren't there working, so you guys were tired of the shooting.
And I want to piggyback on that. I mean, Chris, you've talked about how great your team's done, but we can't say enough about how great you specifically have been. I don't know, give me a couple of examples. I've been at, Chris's son and my son are on the same football team. I've been in the crowd of a football game and he goes, gets forced into work because he's fixing the audio, he's fixing the wifi. He's going to school at his kid's, you know, high school football game. And I mean, I know we all would do it if we were in that position, but like, did it with a smile, didn't think twice about it, jumped up. He, he, I, he was immediately concerned about it, wanted it fixed. I mean, it wasn't like anybody had to plug in to do different stuff. I mean, besides that experience, which is really on your personal time as far as I'm concerned, but besides that, I mean, you and your team have just been absolutely breath of fresh air. I, I can't say enough about what a difference I've seen with such a your department in my time for, for sure. So for your job, I can't, very thanks. All right, one more note. Athletic director. Any questions for Lori?
Yeah, a couple of questions, the whiskey bag from the boosters and all that lighting. The flag not being lit up and then the other side of the field not being lit up. I did hear it's easier to see over there than it looks. It just looks really dark. And that's, it's very dark, please try to peep different things, the actual construction lights to brighten, it just hasn't worked. So lots of eyes looking at other information, but just looking at lights to lean over, um, maybe project more and maybe light is a little bit.
Is a possibility that might be incorporated as a senior project per second semester? Um, as specifically lighting scoreboard, lighting black.
I just read this and I was kind of laughing, but not laughing like, uh, but like probably we're so concerned about too much light. We have the light and we actually have the opposite of not enough. We have people in the dark and so, ooh, these are really good lights.
I think it might be tough to see the project. I, I say that as, I've talked to Mike quite a bit about it and it seems like there's a fair amount. He's tried all this stuff, feels like that would have normally be done and trying to use that. So I think he's, he'll just try and be ready for next, next, uh, the ball season, I think. I suppose we deal with spring sports too, so, but I think there's quite a lot to it. And the other piece at that facility is a, basically a giant sign directing visitors to the other side.
We, I had twenty put up for the last football game.
Was it effective?
Uh.
It, I would say it was, it was effective in that the visitors knew they had to go over there and they were like, it looks really dark over there. And so someone did anyway, but they do, they were supposed to.
Yes, it worked.
Yeah, it worked in essence, but people were dressed up because it was Halloween, so they like, no one wanted to walk in the dark when it's, we're all dressed up. But I think the sign did work.
Anything else? Anything else? No, moving on to the Morphe hearing system, your score there.
Yes, I would absolutely jump on the bandwagon of thanking and appreciating and supporting IT, the inspiration and getting inspiration lines up for money, connecting with Obama. Owen and I are CC'd on the emails that are in another language, so I appreciate being CC'd on them because I know something's happening, but I really appreciate their dedication to making it work and the amount of time I spend on spreadsheet formulas is already decreasing, which is wonderful. I just ran district attendance through Monday today, as we're kind of a quarter of the way through the year. About thirty-seven percent of our kids have not missed a day of school yet this year and sixty-four percent have missed their oral one days of school. So if you search up school attendance across the nation, I mean, we can, it's still pretty bad post COVID. Our attendance has been outstanding across the district so far this year and continues to get better and better every chunk we're looking at it. That is information, like, that would be on that forward-facing website to see what those kind of markers are when we get there. At the time of this report, I had trained thirty freshmen. We doubled that in the last couple weeks. A lot of freshmen comped times, so sixty freshmen have completed the leadership training. I'm bringing three student leaders to NHI LA's new leadership training on Friday this week. And I took Melanie's advice, thank you Melanie, to use the community Facebook page for good. I posted a flyer about, okay, I carry my workshop today. I got a couple people to sign up right away. Very apprehensive about playing in Facebook world, but for good, we'll try to do that.
I want to say that I do love the links that you have, so we can see some of your stuff in your write-ups, so thank you for doing that. I know it takes a good time, but.
Moving on to the action. Manifest vouchers?
Manifest vouchers.
Moving on there. Yeah, what is the vote for this year? I don't know if they're here. Are people just sitting there?
I think they're waiting for us to. Because we did, we did this, we did this like three or four years ago.
Take your brother.
Drop the dress.
Alright, I think we left off with manifest vouchers. Not sure whether that.
I'm down here. Alright, so for the period, it's ten hundred and eighty-five point nine, three million two million, which is five hundred and sixty-four dollars and that includes us.
No, that's fine.
Alright, any discussions? Here you go, all those favor. Any votes? Carrie? Moving on to personnel actions.
So we have five, our seven, our numbers to be put in for the tax. And you know, they are the number seven and the one. Maybe the way that you see them on the list is the order according to the agreement in that we meant that the board has a group, but sort of.
Did you say five?
Yeah, you said five. Wait, there's someone else?
I guess I would make a motion to approve all four retiring requests.
Second.
Absolutely, very sad, but excited for them to be there.
Any other questions? All those favor? I, I, any votes? I'm having to regret believing except. Okay, new hires. Moving on to strategic planning.
I would say that I did do an update, had a plan to see if we could use medical exchanges and they're reading tomorrow. And that's step in the process to gather the data from the community and then the one of surveys we do once after the word, so that we can.
Moving on to policy.
Medical exchanges, the first week, so.
Any discussions?
So basically, what is what I'm watching in the generative AI, basically that, like, teachers use it appropriately based on, you know, how to facilitate learning, I guess?
Yeah, and like which means for executional.
Yeah, okay.
Don't make a trip. Okay, any for the discussion? No, I was clear. I, I do both. Moving on to the national troop.
So in your packet, there is a letter from Colleen and first of the pair, requesting two additional trips for next school. So two trips to Europe. The names would be that, what's to share from your prior experiences. First trip is to France and that would be November. I have a look at the calendar, so we can start around what it's due. The cost is six hundred and that is for everything. And then the Spain trip, that's the usual year, but in April, it's probably.
And the Vietnam trip is next year, too, right?
The Vietnam trip is next year.
If I was wrong, please.
Do you know what?
I don't know.
Yeah. It's not right March, September, something like that.
So there are three trips to the year.
There are, they're asking for two. So the April one is starting quick. The Thanksgiving one, they're asking for, and November to France is around Thanksgiving from nineteen to twenty-seven. And then Cambodia is February.
Motion to approve the two trips?
I'll second it. Were you making the option first?
Yeah. Thank you. Any discussions? Inexpensive, can't believe you give all that.
Yeah.
First place is like. And all of them are paid for. Okay, all those paid. I, any opposed? Moving on to public comment. Moving on to board committee affiliate reports. One we usually let people go.
So what we did, I can just ask two things to Matt, that's, I forgot before, I apologize. So Matt, so I'm part of the post committee for, you know, the new master plan. And they want the input from high school students to take part in the poll that they run. So we decided to do that. I just got the call from you. When do you think that that's gonna go along?
Have you sent it?
I did.
Okay, it can go out on.
I think I sent it last.
It can go out on Sunday.
Excellent. Thank you.
You're free to leave it.
Yes, sir, thank you.